All right, I just got an error message about the recording. So, Mr. Hanley, I am counting on you as a backup, but the meeting does appear to be recording. So, we will begin. I'd like to call to order this special town council meeting for Thursday, May 14th, 2020, a special meeting on the Town of Wallingford Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Budget. After, I'm going to read an announcement for the benefit of those participating. Some are still new to this process. Members of the public, please keep all of your microphones muted during the meeting unless you're the person asking a question or participating. Also, if you can, keep your camera inactive unless you are speaking, although that's not as big a deal. This system does not deal well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person will come through at a time. Therefore, only speak if you have been recognized. And if you have been recognized and you're in a conversation with somebody, please allow them to finish what they're saying before you cut into what they're saying. It'll make the audio much cleaner. I don't have a wooden gavel. I don't need one. This system allows me to mute everyone if there is background noise or excessive noise. So, I would ask everyone to participate respectfully. And then I will now proceed to go through the departments after we call a moment of silence in the roll call. We'll go through the departments. And if you wish to question or comment regarding a particular department budget, please type into the chat bar. It's, you'll see it if you click on the text bubble on the top right. It's on the top right of my screen. When you click on that icon, you can type in the bar and I'll see the message and I'll know that you want to speak. When I go to the public for comment, I will first look for questions from those participating digitally via computer or smartphone or tablet. Once I'm through those, I'll unmute the callers to see if there are questions from the callers. If you comment as a member of the public, you must start by introducing yourself. Give your name and address, please. All right, with that, please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, thank you. Fishvine.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Morganstein.
Here.
Shertel.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
Chairman Savoni.
Here.
Mayor Dickinson.
Here.
And Jim Bose.
Present.
Thank you.
All right. First up is Wallingford Center, Inc., and then the WCI Capital Facade Improvement Program. Liz, please feel free to unmute yourself. If you have any introductory remarks, please go ahead.
Okay, I think, I'm not sure if Steve Knight is on as well, and Joan Parisi. We had a very good year. We had requested 99,000. Last year, we had requested 94,000, and the mayor approved 95,000. The reason that we wanted a little bit more money was to bring in some more help. I'm thinking of retiring and I'm trying to get somebody in that we can, you know, go through a couple of months and go through and celebrate and all that with me guiding her through and then me stepping out and letting somebody else take over. So, that was the reason, the main reason why we had requested some more money. And we did request more money in the facade program. And my main reasoning for that was there is an awful lot of excitement going down, down on North Colony Road and the end of Center Street. We've had three or four businesses that have moved into larger business, larger locations. They've doing a lot of improvement and I would love to be able to help them out. There hasn't been that much excitement down there in a few years, in many, many years, actually. So, it's nice to see that area of town growing. Those people, you know, their businesses started to expand and they could have left the downtown and gone somewhere else and they didn't. They stayed in the downtown and I would love to help them out a little bit more if we can. I don't know if Steve has anything to say. Steve?
No, I think you're covered, Liz.
And if there's any questions?
Yep. Yes, first up is Counselor Fishvine.
Good evening. Hi, Liz. Hi, Steve.
Hi, Craig.
The Streetscape Improvement Line.
Yes.
58223. Last year, there was an appropriation of $10,000, but what I'm looking at doesn't reflect that anything was spent in that line. So, why is that?
Last year, we spent, oh, we did. We did get all new, we got all new planters. We got the flags. We ordered more planters that will go in once we're back to normal. So, that expense might not have gone through, but we did, we did do everything through 2019. We used all that 10,000. We got all new planter and we got the 350th flags, which will go back up after Memorial Day. So, that, and we replaced benches. We replaced four benches. And we are slated to get another 20 more planters. So, that money has been used. And the money that, that bill has not been, for this year to end in this June, that hasn't been submitted yet because we have not received the new planters yet.
Okay.
We had, we had gotten 10 new planters last year and they worked out well. So, now we're going another phase.
Okay, I'm just, what the council has been given indicates that none of that money was spent. And what I'm hearing is that those things that the money was spent on are spring, summertime sort of stuff. So, I would have thought.
It's all, it's all, it's all street skate, street skate stuff, not just spring, summertime. We haven't spent anything, we haven't spent anything as of January.
Yeah.
Out of that, out of that account.
And we certainly don't.
That separate line.
We don't put in planters in the winter.
Exactly, we don't.
So, you would do that in the spring or the summer?
The new planters will be coming in the spring and the summer. Some of that money, we also used for reeds and lights.
I'm just, what the council has given indicates that no money was spent out of that line. I'm trying to figure out, you're saying you spent the money?
We spent, maybe I'm misunderstanding because that's what we purchased as of last year. And those benches, I believe, and everything came out of, of the 2019, 2019 money. Now, the money that we, for 2020, has not been spent yet, but that is for the planters and all that stuff and that $10,000 will be spent by June.
Okay, and I'm just trying to.
I think I'm misunderstanding, I think I'm misunderstanding you, Craig. I don't think, I think I'm mixing up my, my, what I, my time of when I purchased these things over the last year or so. Those are all the things that we bought. It might have been out of before July of last year. I'm not sure, but I do know that we have another whole thing of planters and benches to replace and all that, which will be done as, by, by the end of, by June 30th of this year.
Yeah, I'm just, and it could be a function of the tax year because the tax year starts July 1.
Right, I think I'm confused.
You know, I'm totally supportive of the utilization of this money for the downtown, okay? I.
And that, and that, that, that money is totally only, only used for streetscape improvements. Absolutely.
Understood, but what I'm looking at, I'm just trying to figure out, do you have 10 grand to spend right now?
Yes.
Or else you're going to get 10 grand in July? Because that's what this document reflects. And maybe, I don't, I don't know.
The way it's been working is I want 10 grand every year out of that. That's, that's the way it's been working for the last three or four years. I asked for 10 grand and this year I asked for a little bit more because we need to replace the larger reeds that go on the police department and all that. So, I do ask for that money and that's for improvements. That's to replace benches, to replace anything that needs to be replaced. That's exactly what it is.
Understood.
I'm sorry if I was confusing. I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. What I'm just trying to figure out is between today, which we are in the middle of May.
Yes.
And.
June 30th.
June 30th. Are you going to expend $10,000 beautifying the downtown and then July 1, get another $10,000 to beautify downtown? Because that's what this reflects.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. And that $10,000 will go through the whole year and some of it will be used for Christmas. Some of it will be used for other things.
Okay.
That, that encompasses a lot of different things, not just planters and benches and stuff like that.
Understood, and I, and I see the utilization of the money downtown and I hope to see it with regard to this.
Can I make a comment?
That's Joan, Joan Parisi.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Joan.
Yeah, I think, Craig, part of the, part of the issue is that, can you mute that? Can you mute that? Yep, a part of the issue is that because of this virus, none of us have been into the office because they're using the hubcap to distribute meals to the kids for school. So, some of this budget information that you have for expenditures is not up to date. I'm sure there are some invoices that are waiting for us to pay when we get back into the office.
All right, so you're disagreeing with what Liz just said then?
No, 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 she's correct.
Yeah, that's not true.
She's correcting what she's saying. It's just that the benches or the planters that are coming in the spring have not been paid for.
Yeah, so.
That, yeah, that, I mean, that, yeah, yeah. Those have been ordered, they have not arrived, and then they have not been paid for it, but they have not been, yeah, but those were ordered in the last couple of weeks.
That has nothing to do with whether, that has nothing to do with whether or not you're using the hubcap offices. The fact of the matter is.
Right, that doesn't have.
There are no, there are no invoices to be paid on this line.
There are not. Exactly. Those invoices are not.
Those invoices haven't come yet.
Those invoices are not there yet, but that money, and it's my intention that that $10,000 will be spent as of June 30, by June 30th.
Yes, they've been appropriated, Craig. They've been appropriated for those expenditures. Okay?
Understood, okay. So, let's move, let's move to line 58253, which you requested $20,000. And I know, you know, I spent years getting that double to the 10 grand, right?
Right.
If you had, so the mayor cut it in half. If you had the $20,000 as opposed to the 10, what would you do with that?
Okay, when I asked for the $20,000, of course, it was pre-pandemic pandemic and we had a lot of people that were interested and I had a lot of requests for the facade program. Right now, I think we spent 7,500 of the 10 and we have, I just did an approval for another 1,200. And I have four applications that are sitting on my desk. Whether these are small businesses, I honestly don't know if they're going to be able to do the improvements that they wanted to do. I spoke about it a little bit earlier. A lot of it is, three of them are merchants that are down on North Colony, on the corner of North Colony and, and Center Street in that area, which needs some vast improvement and I would love to help them out. So, my intention was that I would make it through June 30th with two and then I'd, I'd go into the year with two, go into the fiscal year with two, ready to go. And so, that's why I was looking for some more money. The way things are now, I don't know if that's going to happen because businesses, you know, I'm talking to the businesses every day and they're struggling. So, I don't know if they're going to have extra money to put in for their facade.
So, refresh my recollection because you're, you were dealing with numbers in the singular. You said you had two. Are these grants in particular fixed amounts?
These are, these are projects that people are working on. These are people that have applied, yes. These are people that have applied and they're larger proj, they're larger projects, so I'd like to give them more than $1,500 if I could. But I honestly, you know, I'm just being honest with you. I don't know if they're putting it on the back burner or it's not going to happen. I just honestly don't know with the state of things.
All right, so as we sit here right now, you do not have enough applications to utilize $20,000?
I do not, but I don't usually, I usually have, I usually go into July with two or three and then throughout the year I get plenty, so. And that money, if we don't use it, it goes back.
Yeah, understood. And then the, wait, let's see. There's another question I had about that. Oh, is it still a matching program?
Pretty much, depending, some of the projects that we had this year were very large projects. We were able to give a little bit more due to, you know, we went up from the 5,000 two years ago to the 10,000 and that helped. So, on the smaller projects, it is a matching. On the larger, we had one person that did $40,000 worth of work. We were able to give him about four, which, you know, helped out, helped him out, but it certainly wasn't matching. But we've had some larger projects, so it is, it is, the more we can give, the better off, the more they can do.
Are you, I understand that we are in a time of uncertainty, but if, when the council does a budget, are you still asking for the 20,000 or you're comfortable?
Honestly, right now, I'm probably just the state of things. I'm fine with the 10,000. I mean, I always ask for a wish list and that, you know, I always would rather have a little bit more in case more people want to use it, but just the state of things, I'm fine if I could have the 10. I would love to have a little cushion, but that's, you know, I certainly understand the way things are.
Right, well, as do I. Thank you and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Up next, I have Counselor Morganstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Liz, a couple of questions came up, given the information that you have given. So, you're talking about some smaller facade projects are a 50-50 share. It sounds like the 40,000, we gave a 10%. Is there an average of a typical facade cost?
Of what we contribute or what somebody puts into?
Yeah, of just, so if we were to kind of go, you know, down Main Street and look at people that have, you know, a relatively average front, is there a cost?
It depends what they do, but a lot of times it's probably about, in average, a smaller one is probably $3,000 to $5,000. That would be, you know, maybe a new awning, new painting, new windows, you know, maybe new, the, the blade signs. We've been extremely successful with the blade signs. The blade signs are usually about, cost people about $5,000 to $1,000 and $500 to $1,000 and we've been helping out with those. We've been matching those and that has been extremely, extremely successful.
Yeah, and do you have any sense if, and I'm just going to throw this out there, not that I intend to request this, but if we were to say we've really hit hard times and all we are interested in having go on at this point is, for instance, those blade signs, is that something that you think people would be accepting of, that you would find our look would be detrimental? I'm just trying to put a value on the look of our facades.
Yeah, I mean, the, the blade signs do make a huge difference, but the facade is really the biggest thing. I think it would be. The fact that we can help out a little does really motivate people to do a little bit more, you know?
And to want to be in our downtown.
It really, it honestly does. They get really excited when I say, well, you know, if you do this, we can, you know, we can help you do this, we can help you do that. We have an architect on board, Steve Lazarus, who will go down and do drawings for free and it's amazing, you know, just that little bit of help does motivate them to do a little bit more. I'd hate to see it go just for blade signs. You know, I realize that, of course, we all have to tighten our belts and we'll do, we'll do whatever need to be done, but the facade, it's, I'm really proud of that program and I'd hate to see that. I really would hate to see that fall by the wayside.
And it, and it's what people, no, no, let me, let me just say, because I, the answer that I'm hearing is, I'm completely supportive of, if people are going to relocate somewhere, they want to come to Wallingford because they're being offered these sorts of things. I'm, I was more, you know, not, not asking to have it happen. I was just looking to, and if Steve, I'm happy to hear what you have to say, Steve.
Basically, the same thing, that we have two or three incentives to try to draw people downtown and there are small amounts of money given, given the times, but they do mean a lot. What Liz was saying, when people see that kind of support coming from the municipal government, it really draws them, makes them feel an important part of, of downtown Wallingford and it, it has very positive benefits.
Yeah, thank you. So, then the other question I have, so the person that you're looking to be paying something to as you train them to get up and running into your position, thus a little higher expense there, is this someone that you're already working with?
We do have, I do have an assistant right now who's working very small hours and we were hoping, the goal was that she could work more in the summer and I could kind of do Celebrate more as a consultant sort of thing and I can back off and she could run with it. So, that was kind of our, that was, that was our intention. Right now, we really, honestly, we don't know. I'm hoping that, you know, I'm going forward with Celebrate Wallingford. I'm getting in applications. I'm getting inundated with applications because businesses really are going to need it. I just don't, like, we don't know. We just don't know if it's going to happen or what's going to happen. So, there's, would I like the extra money? Yes. Will I need it? Maybe I won't, I don't know. I can't, I can't say.
Well, and I think as we're looking at hardline items, is there a chance that if you already are working with this person, if the number of hours that each of you were doing were the same, but in the process of doing that work, you were training this person up without extra money, do you see yourself able to manage that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, everything is, is manageable. It's just, it's, you know, we certainly do what we need to do and that, and that $4,000 is not, certainly not going to make or break us. It would make it a little bit easier, but, you know, my goal intentionally was I was going to make it through the 350th and then start to back off a little bit and then hand over the reins. But like I said, I don't, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. So, right now, I'm, I'm fine with the way things are.
Okay, I appreciate, appreciate that. Okay, I'm all set. Thank you.
Let me just add, I would like to add to that if I could. You know, Liz, this has done a phenomenal job and for much less than money than we would actually lay out for, for somebody with her talent and her dedication. It is time for us to bring on somebody to give her a hand with this and we're hoping, hoping to transition somebody to take this position over. Those are very large shoes to fill and there are 1,000 moving parts, believe it or not, with, with Wallingford Center. And so, it would be very useful to be able to have the, the extra $4,000 to, to raise the number of hours that this person is, is working with Liz, but as she said and what everybody realizes, we have no idea what's going to happen in the next three or four months. So, we have to be satisfied with what we see on the budget right now.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Gina.
I think that's all I have from the council on Wallingford Center, Inc. and WCI Capital Facade. Any members of the public have questions for this budget line? Mr. Chardulo, I have a note that you have questions, but it seems to me that your questions are for the cemetery. Is that correct?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, good. Well, the question that I posed to you through the chat had more to do with the process. It kind of applied to all of the social organizations that we contribute to. And as you, as you could see, I was asking, because this was an issue last year, are we requiring all of these organizations? And I'm not questioning the dollars that they're asking for. However, we should be able to review their detailed budget documented with their justification for council review and ultimately the public. If, if I would like to come in and look at the senior center budget in detail or the cemetery budget, I would like to be able to do that and I feel like I have a, I have a right to do that. So, that was really my question. Are we requiring the proper documentation or, or not?
Yes, we, we have budget detail in our books and I'm sure the clerk can make those detailed budgets available to you.
Okay, good.
She's nodding her head yes. Can you do me a favor? When you, when you are speaking to the meeting, can you lower the speakers on your computer?
Well, actually, right now, I'm talking to you over the telephone.
Yes.
Because I, for some reason, I haven't been able to get your audio through the GoTo application.
Okay, I, I seem to hear some feedback coming and I, I thought it's because your, your speaker on your computer is on. your, um, your speaker on your computer is on.
Uh, no, I have my speaker turned down, um, and I'm on my phone. I'm watching you on the GoTo. I can see your mouth moving, but I can't hear you.
Okay.
How about now? Is it okay or has it happened recently or?
Yeah, I was, I was hearing some kind of ghost thing. It's, it's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. All right, uh, I don't believe I have any more questions for the WCI Capital Cassade or the Wallingford Center Inc. So.
All set?
All set. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much.
Um, so we move on to the senior center. Mr. Viola.
I'm here.
Yes, we see you.
So. Should I talk?
Please.
Okay, well, I just want to say that um, we had, had another great year at the senior center. Um, people seemed to be very satisfied. A lot of great programs and services. Um, the people were very happy about. Um, we have a lot of young seniors down there dancing and working out in the gym and um, having a good time. But we also have seen a, a big increase in more frail seniors coming to the senior center uh, over the past few years. When I have met with the mayor, one of the things that I think illustrates it the best is with our buses. Um, bringing people into the center. Um, we have, you know, to use the wheelchair lift, not just for people in wheelchairs, but for people who have walkers that can't get up the steps of the bus. So it's not strictly wheelchairs, but um, in 2017, we utilized the wheelchair lift on 2,780 of approximately 12,000 trips. Uh, in 2018, we utilized the wheelchair lift on 4,096 out of about 12,000 uh, trips. This past year, um, we utilized the wheelchair lift 5,745 times out of over, a little over 10,000 trips. So it just illustrates that, that we have a lot of people that really need a lot of assistance coming to the center now. Uh, more people are staying in the community, um, getting services at home. Um, you know, less people are, are living in facilities and, and more people, people want to stay home and that's a good thing and we support that. Um, but it does increase uh, the strain on our staff. It increases the amount of time it takes to get people on the buses and it reduces the number of people we can serve. You know, we feel very fortunate to have the town behind us, have a great facility that we have. Um, we were fortunate enough to get another new bus uh, at the end of 2019 in December. Uh, another grant-funded, 5310 grant-funded bus came in, so we now have a, a pretty new fleet. But you know, we have the 2020, we have a 2017 and a 2015 bus um, to get, you know, get our older adults around town, get them to doctor's appointments, get them to the grocery store. Um, so we're, you know, we're grateful to have the great resources that we have. You know, it's, it's uncertain times right now. The center is closed. Um, it's very, very difficult for um, for me personally, to not be able to be providing services to our older adults. We're doing what we can. Um, you know, trying to help people, assist people. We're running a lot of programming on Zoom and Facebook Live, uh, concerts and exercise and, and everything that we can. Uh, we're trying to, you know, continue to provide services, but um, it's a, it's a sad situation as everyone is well aware. I won't linger on that. Um, you know, as far as our budget this year, um, you know, I had asked for um, between the operating and the transportation budget, I had asked for an additional $36,000. However, 62% of that was, you know, over 22,000 of that was for the increase in the healthcare costs. Um, and a small increase for the staff and the, and the associated cost of that. Pretty much that's, you know, there was no other significant changes on any other line items in our budget. Um, so, you know, holding last year's um, budget line as the mayor has, has done. Um, staff will, will not get an increase this year and I personally, you know, I understand that. It's the, you know, the, the economic situation that we're in now. Um, it will be somewhat difficult to absorb the increased healthcare costs, um, but we will find a way to do that. Um, I have some things in mind that I can do to mitigate the, the impact of those uh, healthcare premium costs that are, you know, pretty significant. It's, you know, I forget, 26.8% or whatever, uh, healthcare premium increase this year. So other than that, other than that, in this pandemic, I don't have a working world. Um, and I, once again, I'm grateful for the support of the town and the, and the wonderful facility that we have and I'll take any questions.
Thank you. First up, I have Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Mr. Viola, how are you?
Hi, Counselor Tada.
I just have two questions. The first one, you were talking about the health insurance and in your um, the letter that was with our budget dated February 14th, you said you had expected it to um, rise to 25.3%. Did that change after this letter? Because I know um, I think some of the estimates were maybe a little bit higher than they came down a little bit. Is that still the case, the 25.3%?
Actually, in most of the other town departments, that was the case. Um, for us, I think it actually nudged up a little bit to like 26.3%. So it was, it actually ended up being for us and we're similar to the library, I guess. We're in a, a category of the, you know, we're able to get the town insurance. Ours actually went up a little bit, that more than what, what was, uh, I was originally given. If, if I'm incorrect, uh, Jim Bose can correct me, but I think that's, when we met, that's what was the situation.
Okay. I don't know if Mr. Bose wants to chime in or not.
Mr. Viola uh, has a good memory and he is correct.
Okay, thank you. And my second question, do you think you're going to realize any savings due to the pandemic? Because I'm, I mean, that you're, now that you're closed, I'm assuming there's gonna be savings with not having programming?
Yes, we are, um, we are experiencing savings. Uh, we are also losing some revenue. Um, we, uh, we do charge a fee for our memory lane program. Um, so that brings in a, you know, a good percentage of, not a good percentage, but a percentage of revenue. Uh, I think I budget uh, as soon as I set something down here. We budget uh, $60,500 a year in revenue from that program. So if you divide that by 12 and minus it by the months we're missing, we're, we're losing that revenue. Um, we also budget about $5,000 in uh, bus donations, yeah, on the transportation side. So we're losing some revenue, but we are saving money. So, you know, we will have a little bit of savings, but it's not gonna be as significant without the, with the, with the revenue loss.
Sure. Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Up next, Counselor Chertel.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, before you begin, uh, I just want to wish you a happy birthday and thank you for joining us in this meeting on your birthday. And, and if everybody sticks around to the end, maybe we can sing to you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I uh, I was hoping to get to my cake by now and it really all depends on Craig Fishbein, how fast I get to my birthday cake. So anyway, um, but thank you for that. I'm gonna start, I want to piggyback off one of Counselor Tada's questions because I had the exact same question. So really, this is more for Mr. Bose. I, I don't understand the health, why would the senior center get hit with a, with a larger health insurance increase? The town increase, the town is going up about 10%, isn't it? How do you guys, how do you guys do that? I mean, I, you don't, you're not like rating each subgroup of the town different. Wouldn't you apply the increase evenly across all town groups?
No, because each subgroup has different benefits, uh, levels as well as different co-payments uh, by the employee into what you would call premium cost sharing co-payment, I mean, by that, into the plan. So like groups, usually the same union members or the same classification of employee based upon that expenditure grouping and that revenue grouping are grouped in the same subgroups. And um, Jim Putt, I'm sure can get into it in very, very much more, more detail, but that, that's the way it's looked at. So I think when you, you might say something, it's 10% as a whole, you might have subgroups that are 12, some that are eight, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, I, yeah, I, that make, I get, okay, that makes sense to me. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, Mr. Viola, do you have a, a sense of when you would reopen? You know, we were, I was on a call with, the YMCA had a Zoom yesterday and they're talking about June 20th. I know that's the YMCA. Um, you know, there's a little overlap in what you guys do, but, but it's not a ton. I don't know. Do you have any sense of, would you be a phase two reopening or you just don't know? Would you be beyond that?
We um, you know, we've been following, you know, the state mandates and um, as of today, we still had posted May 21st. Um, tomorrow, I have a board, a Zoom board meeting with my board tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM and I plan to, to ask them based on the, the governor's phases um, to go to the June 20th date as our next possible to open date. Um, whether we will actually be able to open then, um, I don't know. We have the most frail um, compromised population of, of any and we have to be extremely cautious. Um, you know, I will say that with that said, you know, we're gonna try to do everything we can uh, in the month of June. Um, we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to have outdoor activities, um, some hikes, um, possibly some concerts out in the parking lot with social distancing. Um, we're having some car meetings. Um, you know, trying to get creative, uh, small groups that can meet far apart. Our golf league is in action. Uh, we might be able to get some pickleball and bocce and a few outdoor things where, where distancing is possible. Um, but frankly, uh, the, the big percentage of the people I've been talking to and I'm talking to people every single day. I, I take tons of phone calls every day at the center. Uh, most of them are, are really frightened and, and really worried about um, being exposed. So there, I mean, they miss coming there. They miss the socialization. They miss their activities, their, their bingo cards pool, everything that they do there. They, um, but they are, you know, concerned about um, this virus and, and what it could do. So, you know, we're being very mindful. I'm meeting regularly with, um, I talked to, uh, well, Anne, the public health nurse is actually in the building with me every day. We talk regularly. Steve Civitelli and I have been talking all along. Um, for my board tomorrow, I have a, a package of a listing of things that, um, you know, I hope to implement in order, you know, once we're able to open, we're probably partially open, you know, limited numbers, um, shields, everything else. I have a list out to the public works department. They've already acted on some of those as they have in other town buildings with the uh, increased fresh air and the HVAC system filtration, um, things like that. I've asked for uh, some plexiglass shields at the front desk and, and, you know, in the other areas of the building and uh, maybe some increased custodial services. Uh, I'm also working on some, some other items for the building. Uh, you know, touchless flushing and faucets and things like that. I'm trying to get into the building during, during this time when we're, it's easy to get stuff done, you know, being, being closed. I know I didn't answer your question. I hope that we could open on Monday, June 22nd or at least partially open. Um, if not, I, I'm thinking truthfully in my heart, I'm thinking we're more of a phase three, which would be in, in early to mid-July. Um, I, I think at that point, I'm, I'm hopeful at that point, we'll really, you know, be able to open at least in some capacity.
Now, you, you answered it and you actually answered my next question, which was about, you know, do you have a plan for doing some activities and not others? And you, that's exactly what you just uh, answered. So I, I appreciate all of that. Uh, and I also want to, I want to comment on um, just the fact that we, the council gets monthly, the committee on aging reports, they're very extensive, the minutes of the meetings, we get the budget amounts, we get the checkbook and we get all, we get a comprehensive report every month from you guys. So we are not just in the budget books, but every month, we have that information. Uh, just, I know that was, member of the public asked that uh, in general, I just wanted to add that. Uh, can you just, I'm sorry, it, when it comes to the membership, it, it says you have 4,000 active members and then, no, 4,000 registered members, 3,000 active members roughly. Um, and I, I know what I, when I read the reports, it tallies up all of the people who attend like all the great monthly programs and that's where like the 3,000 comes from. Are those 3,000 unique people or is it more like the same, you know, 2,000 people or 1,500 people? And I'm just curious. It doesn't really matter. I'm just curious when I.
Yeah, no, you, you actually, you know, you, I could tell you that there's, we average about 250 people a day during the building under normal circumstances. Um, there's probably 800 to 1,000 that come at least weekly. There's probably 1,500 um, that come at least monthly. And then we have people that come a couple of times a year. They come to one party, they go on one trip, they go on. So there's a lot of people who are, you know, who are members, um, who don't come all that often. But we do require, um, besides following the obituaries, obviously, and taking people off when they, when they pass, uh, we require people to come in at least once a year and update their, their card and get a sticker on the back. And if they don't update after three months, we take them off the rolls. So that, that number, that 4,000 number reflects the fact, you know, it's an updated thing. We don't just let it pile up. Um, you know, it's a, it's a true number, but we, I can, you know, we definitely don't have 4,000 people coming in all the time. We'd be, you know, it's busy enough, believe me. Um, I just want to share one other thing to um, Mr. Ciardillo. I, I just, you know, our, our budget is also available at the senior center. Anytime you want to come in and look at it, it's right there. I also posted online on Independent Sector, which is a, a watchdog kind of organization for nonprofit organization. So it's, it's out there if you want to see it, um, you know, monthly, yearly, whatever you want. Come on down anytime. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, no, you did. You did, you did. Um, I love how you answer questions. Don't you, Mr. Bose? Are you listening, Mr. Bose? No, I'm just having some fun. Um, I have one more question.
Are you saying I talk too much?
No, I'm saying you're actually answering like, I'm just picking on Jim Bose. That's all I'm doing.
You could hear when Bill Viola and I get together.
Yeah. Um, it, the, the, um, the last question is, most, when I look at just not factoring in the transportation, just the senior center, you know, majority of your budget, the majority of your contribution from the town is salaries. I mean, I think that's pretty much, the, the 628,000, if I'm reading the report right, is really going to, to pay salaries. So.
500 of it, yeah.
500, okay. I guess that's where I'm, so, because I think the question was, you know, I'm, I'm, I had the other question I had, which is similar to Counselor Tada's question was about, you know, is there any savings? Um, but I read in your most recent minutes, you have people, they're still working every day at the building or they're making calls to people who are inbound. They're making masks. I mean, there, there, all sorts of stuff is going on.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they're, they're not all in this place every single day, but they are, staff is rotating. There are several staff in, you know, I don't have everybody come in every day. My staff happens to be elderly. I'm, I'm 61. I'm one of the younger staff members on my staff. We're all, my social worker is 70. Ouch, doesn't hear this, but you know, it's um, so for their safety, we try to minimize their exposure too, but they are working from home. My social worker is making phone calls from home every single day. Uh, my program staff is, has such a robust online presence. They're doing uh, FaceTime or not FaceTime, um, Facebook Live and Zoom, uh, exercise classes, uh, dances, showing movies, all kinds of things online. It's, it's really, I'm, I'm amazed. I'm proud of them for, for the amount of work they're putting in. So yes, they are still working. We're still putting out a newsletter every month. We're still in, you know, paying our bills. We're, you know, we're writing things up. We're, we're doing, you know, all the work that goes on and we're helping people access um, you know, different things. We're, we're, we've had, we've had tons of masks made. We got material. We've had all these masks made. We're distributing them to people throughout town. Um, we're referring people to other agencies and trying to help them out as much as we can. You know, during this. So yes, we are still paying people salaries during this.
Okay. Uh, thank you for all you're doing. I appreciate it. And um, thank you.
My pleasure.
Next up, Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was actually thinking about what I wanted to ask and I think it was probably answered. And with it answered, I kind of rethought where I was going with it. And in general, I see the senior center as I see park and recreation and a few other departments and that. These are, these are departments that by job description, by necessity have to operate month to month in the type of mindset that we take on in April. They live under this idea of budget spending and public spending and, and I know they're reminded all year long to be tight. So when they create a budget, I, I can't even imagine that there's anything in there that requires, you know, questioning. The only thing we could look at is, you know, what in fact could be an area where we might save money. And in the case of the senior center bill, and I was thinking about the fact that when are you going to open? And really, your, your operation is one primarily of operational expenses. You don't buy stuff. You operate. So everything from humans to utilities staying open and materials to stay open, that's what you operate on. So I would think that every month you're able to estimate, well, this is what we're going to not spend, this is what we're not going to earn, a little bit maybe more easily than some other departments. And then I was thinking to myself, okay, so what happens if you're closed and you can't really operate based on what your budget is for three or four months more? If anything, that would result potentially in a surplus at the end of the year in your department for whatever amount it might be. And given the, given the, the nature of this year's budget deliberations and where we all are, both at it, where we might be able to find something upfront, I would never attempt to try to save money on your budget by cutting something. However, I might, I would, I ask you, do you think you could potentially estimate a quote unquote, what would amount to be the surplus at the end of the year from a lack of operation upfront now as we're at this point? And when you created your budget, you knew what it needed to be. But is your budget the type which you could look at and say, well, if I have two months off, you know, maybe, you know, maybe that's X. And, and then I, now that I've just laid out that whole philosophy and request, I almost don't want to ask you to do it. Because I, as I said, things are so tight for you, but I'm going to pose it. I think I have a responsibility to do so. Not, and I'd want you to be totally confident that you might be able to come up with something along the lines of what I said, if I made any sense. Thanks.
Right. Well, obviously it would be difficult for me to put an exact number on it. I would like to first of all, point out that anything we do have left at the end of the year, we leave in the bank and then we put that amount into the budget, not of the next fiscal year, but the fiscal year after that, so that it offsets the amount of, of the, that we request from the town. And you can see that on our budget, it's listed as carryover and it tells you what year it's from. So the money doesn't just go away or go in our pockets or something. It benefits the town or reduces the burden to the town down the road. But yes, you know, could I see us having, you know, you know, we usually end up with a number somewhere between 5,000 and $15,000 at the end of the year. If we're, if we're prudent, if we have a good year, could that end up being $20,000 this year instead of 6,000 or 8,000? Yes, it certainly could. And then, you know, I don't know what I would do with that money other than let it roll over. You know, could I go out with it and, you know, buy extra copy paper or buy extra tires for the bus for next year to try to reduce the burden next year? I don't know. I, I'm at your mercy.
I appreciate that. I, and I fear I didn't, I didn't present myself as well as I wanted to. I would never question what ended up, what, what ended up with the money.
I know. I just wanted people to know.
I know, I understand. Well, that, that's true too. That's good of you to say that. I guess all I was thinking about was, you know, the town's going to benefit, you're going to benefit, whatever, someone's going to benefit if there was a, an amount, a considerable amount of your budget, you know, a reasonably discussable amount of your budget that was going, that might not be used. And then at this particular point in time, this budget year, good time to be able to take it out as opposed to reuse it at the end because we're looking for places to get to zero. And typically, we may not be this tight about it. That's why I asked it. But even from the, the examples you gave, I don't, I don't believe that there would be any amounts of enough of, you know, enough that would make it worth addressing it beyond this. I appreciate you answering my question. I kind of wanted to think out loud. That's always dangerous. But you answered my question, but thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next is Counselor Morgenstein.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Viola. Just a few questions. One was, your very beginning introduction mentioned not doing a salary increase. I'm looking across our page of your breakdown and the dismounts number six salaries. You mean that the 1920 salary number should be the number that we're now going to put in for the 21 salary number?
Correct. I mean, the mayor is, is keeping us at the same budget that we had, we submitted last year. So, I mean, I, obviously I could move money from one, from A to B and still give the staff an increase. But where would that leave me next year? Then I'd have to come up with the money next year. So, you know, logically, we have to stay at the same amount we're at this year.
Right. But I just want to make sure I was clear on that. And then the only other question I have is with regard to climbing insurance costs. Have your employees done what the bargaining units in the general government and such? And are, is anyone transferring into HSA type plan?
We have not. We do offer an FSA for people, but we do not have an HSA. We haven't changed our, you know, this was the first time that there was such a significant increase. You know, other years it's been 6%, 8%, something like that. That's what, you know, like, you know, this was kind of caught us off guard. You know, if, if the costs continue to escalate at this rate, certainly we have to look at other options, you know, that us but the town, you know, itself. But, no, we're, we're on the same plan that we were before. I mean, our, our co-pays have increased over the years, just like everyone else's, you know. When I started at the senior center, I don't know, 18 years ago, it was, you know, five and $10 co-pays and then it went to 10s and 20s. Now it's like $35 co-pays and $50 co-pays or whatever. So, you know, things have gone up over the years, but we haven't explored any other options. I, I'm not really privy to what the other town departments plans are like, to be honest with you. So it's hard for me to comment on that.
So, and am I correct to assume that because you're not directly counties, we're simply giving money to the senior center, our personal people don't have any with your insurance cost and such?
You know, I'm sorry, Counselor Morgenstein, you're, the sound of your, there's like kind of a hollow ringing sound to it. I can't get every word clearly.
Yeah, in and out for as well. I'm not sure what has happened. So you're not a department of the town, but rather an organization that the town gives money toward, correct?
Correct, yeah. We're, the WCOA Wallingford Committee on Aging is a 501(c)(3) and we provide the, the senior services for the town of Wallingford. But we, you know, the building is the town's and our operating budget is given to us by the town. That's correct.
Okay. Am I bringing up the market increase in health costs? As we, as a council, have worked together with Mr. Hutt on the insurance coverage for town employees, this move away from more traditional into a type thing has been quite a savings. And then you don't get hit with the Cadillac and such. So yeah, something just to obviously move forward, look at. I don't know if you heard me. That's all I have. Thank you.
I got the gist of it, that we can, you know, we can look, we could start to look at other options for, you know, to reduce the costs going forward.
Moving forward. Thank you much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor.
All right, that's all I have for council questions for the senior center. Are there any questions from members of the public regarding the senior center? Mr. Commerford.
Yes, Mr. Viola, you just stated that you're not a entity of the town. Is that correct?
Mr. Commerford, name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Commerford, 5 Broadview Drive, Wallingford, Connecticut. I'm sorry. Mr. Viola, you just stated that you're not an entity of the town?
I didn't say we were not an entity of the town. We're not a town department.
Because I'm confused.
We are, we are an entity of the town. You know, we're often referred to as a quasi-town entity or something along that nature, similar to the library, similar to the daycare, Wallingford daycare, you know.
Because I'm just confused about that. But yet you get your benefits through the, the town benefit program, correct?
Yeah, we've, we, you know, traditionally, since I've come to the senior center, this was in place, you know, when I came 18 years ago, the town insurance had a subcategory for the social service organizations, the library, SCOW, ourselves, where we could get our insurance through the town. But it comes, you know, out of our budget, we pay the plus the staff co-pays. You know, we all have money deducted out of our salary every week to, towards the premiums.
I, I understand about the co-pays, but, so, so the gist of it is that the town offers your 501(c)(3), an opportunity to piggyback on their insurance. Is that, is that fair for me to say?
I would say essentially that's correct, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from members of the public? Let me just go through. Any, anyone on the telephone have questions for the senior center? All right. Thank you, Mr. Viola. You're all set.
Thank you, councilors and public. Have a good evening.
Next up is historic program match. And who do we have here to talk about that? Mayor, Mr. Bose?
I'll, I'll pick any question.
Okay. Any questions on the historic program match? Then from the council, any from the public? And any from those on the telephone? All right, moving on. Next up is the Center Street Cemetery. And I understand that both Mr. Beaumont and Mr. Gross are going to talk to us about that.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes, Mr. Gross, you are live now.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. And I'm a member of the cemetery board and I'm here with Mr. Beaumont. And we are asking for the same amount of money we have over the last few years to operate cemetery, the town of Wallingford.
Okay. And are you and Mr. Beaumont on the same connection?
No, sir.
No, we're not, Benny.
Okay.
Mr. Gross is caller number four.
I got that.
Mr. Beaumont is live on the computer.
Okay. And anyone on the council have questions regarding the cemetery budget? All right, Counselor Chertel, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Bob. Hi, Bob. About, I know back in the, I used to know how many burials you averaged. I think it was between seven and 13 a year. Is that still true? And how many did you have last year?
Okay, last year, this is Bob Gross speaking, the cemetery had, I have it written down there on a piece of paper, I think it was 16 last year. And we're running ahead of pace right now this year, unfortunately.
Okay. I also know we used to charge a $500 maintenance fee per burial. Is that still the case?
It's not, it's a, it's a perpetual care and that's a customary fee that any cemetery will charge. And that's to maintain the grounds of the cemetery, correct?
I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't judging.
But, no, no, I'm explaining what it is. Oh, no, no, I'm not taking offense to it. I'm explaining, because you said a fee, so I'm trying to just explain. It's called perpetual care and it's to maintain the cemetery. And pretty much all cemeteries have that fee. I'm involved with two cemeteries, well, more than that really. And that perpetual care is pretty much a standard fee and it's done at pretty much every cemetery that I know of.
Yeah. And I remember, I think I was on the board when we, we passed that, I want to say six years ago or seven years ago. We didn't charge anything, I think, prior to that.
No, you, the cemetery did charge a fee. It was just a lower fee and we got it more in line to what other cemeteries are charging.
Okay. Okay. What, I don't have a budget. Is there a budget? Did anyone, maybe I missed it. Do we get, do we get a budget?
No, you did not.
Can we get a-
We don't have one at this time. We're basing, we're running off of what we ran off the last few years. And we do not have a budget at this time. The executive board is still working on one.
Okay. And you, I'm sorry, you said you had 15 burials last year and you're running, no. Okay. Um, okay. I don't know how to ask this. It's a horrible ques- you're, you're going to generate more revenue. I mean, it's a cemetery. So I, I don't know how to ask this question without sounding horrible, but you're going to generate more revenue.
Possibly.
You know, so that, I would think then, you know, we've had Counselor Todd asking everyone, you know, can you cut 1%? I would think in your case, you absolutely could cut 1% because you're going to generate more revenue. Is that, without being, I'm going to be heartless, but-
We, we do not know we're going to generate more revenue for the fact that, yes, there's going to be more deaths this year. For the fact that, yes, there's going to be more deaths this year guaranteed. There are already in town. But there's no guarantee that those burials will happen at Center Street Cemetery. So we cannot forecast what the Center Street Cemetery will get in revenue for that. And that's to maintain the grounds of the cemeteries. It's to help maintain the stones. So as more stones go in, it becomes more work for the cemetery and more dollars for the cemetery to maintain it.
Okay, but I thought you said you were running ahead of schedule already.
Well, we have, we have four so far this year. And last year, there was three at this point, so we are ahead.
Okay, okay. What is?
Bob Beaumont, on the cemetery board also. Counselor Chertel, one thing I might mention. The fourth, the fourth one we just had was an ingent burial, and we don't charge as much for those.
Understood. Thank you for that. And I'm just, as I'm thinking, I'm just thought about, what is the capacity of the cemetery? I know that, do we have a sense of, I mean, it's 400 years old. I don't remember, you know, how many, how much room do we have?
Don't know to the exact number, but it's going to outlive all of us and your children.
Okay. That, that's, that's good to know, I think. I was, when you talked about the, the maintenance of the stones, that made sense to me, that, that, that fee obviously covers that. I thought, though, that the, the purchase of the backhoe several years back was actually designed to save money because you could do things with the backhoe to maintain, to move stones that before the backhoe, you could, you'd have to pay someone to do. Is that, is that true?
Yes.
Okay. But you, I mean, when was the, like, but your budget is, hasn't really changed? I guess.
We are trying to, we are keeping the budget really tight. Yet the cemetery's expenses go up every year as everybody else's cost of expenses go up every year.
Yep. Understood. I also think that, that, you know, Mr. Devaney is underpaid too. So I hope he's getting.
I'm not even, we're not even, we're not even saying that. We're just saying the cost of running the cemetery.
I'm saying, I think he's underpaid. But that's fine. I was just, what I was just getting at is, you know, years ago, we didn't charge as much, and we didn't have the backhoe. Now we charge more, we have the backhoe, it can, it can defray some of those maintenance expenses.
No, the backhoe, backhoe helps dig graves also. And that saves us from having to hire somebody to come in with a backhoe and it has an expense to the cemetery. It also does other work around the cemetery and helps us just up, straighten out stones that the cemetery couldn't do before, but now can handle because the machine can do it for the cemetery.
Yeah, yep, I totally agree. And that's all saving money. So I guess that's my.
It's not, the question is save money. It also beautifies the cemetery, because as you said before about Mr. Devaney, yes, for the hours that he puts in there and the skill set that he has, you're woefully, the cemetery association, what the cemetery association pays him is woefully low for what he does, correct?
I, I agree. All right. All right, thank you for what you're doing. Thank you both. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Mr. Gross and Mr. Beaumont. Counselor Chertel kind of asked my question, but I was just wondering about if, if we could get a budget as soon as possible because I, I, I just have a very hard time knowing what any of the money's going to. So there's $85,000, and I have, I mean, I understand some of it is Mr. Devaney's salary. I'm assuming that's the biggest portion, but I really have no idea what, what these expenses are. So if we could get even just a simple, you know, P and L balance sheet for Dell from QuickBooks or something similar to that, that would be extremely helpful. So is that something that we can get before, before we have the go on the budget?
I would have to talk to the board on that. And I do, I could not give you an affirmative answer.
Okay. Yeah, if you could try, that would be very helpful. Because like I said, I just, even just a listing of what the, you know, a breakdown of what the $85,000 is would be helpful. And that was my only question, but I also wanted to wish Counselor Chertel a happy birthday while I have the floor. So happy birthday, and that's all I have for now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, that's all I have for questions from the council. And I do have a note from Mr. Chardulo, so I think I've unmuted you, Mr. Chardulo.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay?
You're live, and it's dark behind you now, in case you're wondering.
Can you see me?
Yes.
Okay, that's for effect, I guess. Before I get started, I wanted to wish Counselor Chertel a happy birthday as well. Earlier, I asked you, my original question had to do with the budgets for these social organizations, Mr. Savoni. I thought you told me that, well, I know you told me, that we had hard copy budgets with the proposed budget and justification. We just heard from Mr. Gross that they haven't submitted that and that for some reason they can't produce, really, what probably amounts to about a two-page budget. I don't understand that.
We did have budgets for most of the other lines. I missed the fact that there was not one for the cemetery.
Well, last year, we had the same issue. And one of the reasons I asked the question this year is another member of the public had raised the question of seeing the cemetery budget. And at that time, I think Mr. Gross said that he was new to the position, and they didn't have one. I followed up to, with the mayor on that, and I asked him whether he was requiring that. You know, he, he also said that because of the turmoil in top management, et cetera, he didn't require that. So here we are again, a year later, and we still don't have one. I said last year, and I'll say it again, I think it's irresponsible, and I do not think you should provide any funds to any social organization unless they provide a proposed documentation with justifications for how they're going to use this money. That's just good governance. Would you agree with that?
Generally speaking, we've historically had budgets from the cemetery.
Right, but we don't have one now. And maybe this should go to yourself and, and the mayor. I genuinely don't, don't understand. And I don't think it's, should be accepted. And I, as I say, I don't, I don't see why you would provide funds to an organization that is not giving you rationale for giving them the funds. It just defies logic. Why would you do that? How, how do you, how would you audit it? Doesn't make any sense.
We do have a request letter.
I'm sorry, you have a what?
We have a request letter from the cemetery association.
Well, I'm talking about a budget and a justification for providing funds. Why don't we do that? Isn't that a requirement? Isn't that a legal requirement?
I can tell you what we have, I can't tell you what we don't have. I can tell you that historically in the past, we have had budgets from them.
Okay. Why would, I guess I'll direct this to the council generally, anybody on the council. Are you folks comfortable approving a budget where you have no documentation? No justification?
That isn't, that is a question that will ultimately be determined before the end of the process.
Okay. Is, I'd like to get a legal reading on that, if I may. Is there, is there a legal representation here today?
I think Attorney Carroll was caller two.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just curious, isn't that, isn't that a legal requirement of town government? Certainly would seem that way.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
There's no legal requirement. We, we decide what funding will be according to various activities where service is being performed by the town. Certainly, there, there is significant service being performed by the town pursuant to the contract with the cemetery association to take care of the cemetery and basically administer the cemetery in behalf of the town and that it is owned by the town. There, as you know, there's a lot involved with every budget. And we, we deal with it in a fairly constrained timeframe. We certainly can look to endeavor to have a budget another year, but there's been plenty for us to deal with every year with the budget. And this is not a huge part of the budget as far as the cemetery cost. I'm not aware of any complaints regarding services provided by the cemetery. So it doesn't reach the highest levels of concern from my perception, but certainly we can work to try to see we have more of a, a budget request from the association for another year.
Was that the mayor, or was that, was that the attorney, town attorney?
That was the mayor.
The mayor, okay. Well, I, I would make it, first of all, I want to say that I'm not here complaining about the services that the cemetery or any other social organization is providing. As I said at the top of the meeting, I'm more concerned about the process and whether we're following proper procedures in terms of using taxpayer money. And so, as I say, if, you know, here we have a, an organization asking for a certain amount of money, and they're saying, well, we can't tell you what we're going to use the money for. So I, I, it defies logic as to why you would accept that. What if they were asking for, instead of 85, 185? So it's really a principle, a very strong principle. And as I say, the, the town has a responsibility to ensure that as stewards of the taxpayer money, of which I'm a part, you have a responsibility to make sure that when you're giving that money away, that you understand what you're giving it away for and there is adequate justification for it. And beyond that, there should be some kind of an audit process, maybe once a year or whatever. But I, I don't find that to be a satisfactory answer. I'm not sure where we're going to go with this. But I just want to make sure that it's duly noted, that this is the second year in a row. I, I have no idea, absolutely no idea, why the cemetery can't produce this budget. I don't know. It's something mysterious here. Can't be more than a two, three, four page document, so, but.
One reason we are not, we have not provided a budget is simply because of the fact that advice of council, we are still in the middle of a lawsuit, we're in a FLOI lawsuit. Based on advice of council, we have been told not to provide a budget.
So that lawsuit has been going on for what, two years?
And been going on for longer than that, sir.
I'm sorry?
That, that has been going on for longer than that, over two years.
So if I'm understanding you, there's some kind of a lawsuit pending. Well, this is getting interesting. The more, the more we talk about it, the more interesting it gets. There's a lawsuit pending, therefore you are not required to submit a budget document. And yet the town is giving you funds without the benefit of that document or justification. That's what I'm hearing.
On advice of our attorney.
Your attorney, is that the town attorney? You have an attorney separate apart from the town, is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct.
Mr. Targilla, we are not a town agency.
I understand.
We have a private attorney.
Okay, that's fine, but I come back to Mr. Savoni and the mayor. We need some legal advice here. I mean, it just, I don't find it acceptable as a citizen of Wallingford to hear what I'm hearing. It suggests to me that we're just not doing our job. So I, I appeal to the council, members of the council. You've heard this conversation. You folks have to intervene somehow here. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next. I'm going to go to Counselor Fishpine, and then after that, Mr. Comerford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just trying to figure out, a representation was made to us that a budget was not done. And then another representation was made to us that upon advice of council, they were advised not to release the budget to us. I'd really like to know the truth, because those two statements are in contrast.
All right, I'll, I'll speak. This is Bob Gross. We do not have a budget. We ask for the same amount of money as the previous years. And we're not going to go into it, Fishpine, because you're the one suing us.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not the one suing you, but anyway.
But you're, you represent the person who's suing us.
I represent a client, yes. And I'm just trying to, to figure out, I mean, I don't understand what the advice of council has to do with it. If the document doesn't exist.
Does not exist at this time.
Okay, well, I just, why would we be relying upon advice of council? But it doesn't, not the first time I've run into these things, so. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Comerford.
Yeah, Bill Comerford, five Broadview Drive. Mr. Gross, I'm assuming you're there, Mr. Gross?
Yes.
You stated that your request was the same as last year?
The amount we received is the same as last year. We asked for a small increase for, the cost of doing business had gone up. And so we asked for a small increase. The mayor requested that we receive the same amount as the previous years, and that goes back multiple years, and we are.
Okay, but I believe if I heard correctly, through this whole conversation, you stated that you asked for no increase. Is that the case, yes or no?
I don't remember what I said, Bill, but we're, we're.
I, I, I know, I have a copy of the letter. Mr. Savoni was going to read it. Can you please read the letter, Mr. Savoni? They were reaching for for the request dated February 25th, 2020, please.
No, I'm not going to read the letter. And please, when you guys are talking, take turns one at a time, because you're chopping up the record.
Okay. I believe that Mr. Gross, the president of the cemetery association, stated numerous times that there was no increase. There wasn't. They asked for the same amount. They stated the same thing last year, where they said they, that the mayor said that they did not have to produce a budget because there was no additional increase asked for. This year, there clearly was. It says in part, this year's increase is primarily due to a general increase in the cost of doing business over those years, meaning the past two years. So that kind of contradicts what Mr. Gross had just stated, in my opinion. So going back to those prior years, we, we, the taxpayers that fund virtually 90 some odd percent of their budget has no idea, no idea what the money to all large, whether it's 85,000 or 150,000. We have, we have no idea. In the past, it has been well-documented information where there was questions about walls and gates and websites and so forth that, in my opinion, were funded by the tax. that in my opinion were funded by the taxpayers that they decided to choose no action to be taken because the statute of limitations ran out. Well, maybe, and it's only a suggestion, maybe if the taxpayer had that information, just like today, we could talk intelligently and ask the same questions so that doesn't take place, but we don't. Let me ask this. Mr. Gross, has Jason Zandry, the, from the town council, reached out to you at any time asking specifically for your budget, actual budgets for the past three years? Not just this year because your attorney apparently told you not to release this year's, but the last three years?
I haven't spoken to Jason in a while, so I don't know when he would have asked me that.
I didn't say, what I'm saying is, did he reach out to you in any communication, email, snail mail, anything? You received nothing?
I'd have to look, I have a shared email, I'd have to take a look.
So you didn't receive anything through the regular mail?
The regular mail, no, sir, not through, as far as I know, I've received nothing through regular mail.
Okay, because to my, my concern is, is that Mr. Zandry did. And he reached through emails as well as through snail mail, and I've been asking him for his copy for well over two months. And for the, this is more elusive than the Loch Ness monster apparently. So let's get to some questions. Mr. Volstermeyer stated that the Town Department of Public Works always has been responsible for the maintenance of the gates that are part of the wall surrounding the cemetery. Is that the opinion of the Cemetery Association?
That has nothing to do with the budget, so I don't.
I, I don't have your budget, so I, I can't, I, I'm, I'm asking about the maintenance of it. I don't have a budget in front of me. So, so part of your budget o- over all these years that you've been in charge, as I stated, Mr. Volstermeyer has questioned under public works budget, he says his department is wholly responsible for the maintenance of those gates. Is that, is that the cemetery's position? But so it would never show up in your budget.
If Volstermeyer is saying it is, I don't know, that's his, that was his interpretation, I'm, I don't know.
So it wouldn't, it would never show up in your budget then? We don't have your budget. So it wouldn't show up in your budget because we don't have your budget?
We don't, Bill, as we said, stated a little while ago, we don't have a budget for this year.
Years past, any year, it doesn't, it doesn't, it wouldn't fall under this year or prior years then?
I don't know, Bill, it appeared in a previous budget, I don't have one in front of me.
The cemetery in the past, in the past, that the erection of the new building on Prince Street would house all the assets owned by the cemetery. So that the use of the old building would not be needed, is that the case?
You can restate that question, Bill?
The cemetery has stated in the past that the erection of the new building on Prince Street would house all the assets owned by the cemetery. The use of the old building would not be needed. Is that the case?
I would have to talk to the section about that.
So you don't know? Is, is, are, are there costs associated with the new budget, your, your proposed budget, that would include, I'm assuming, maintenance for two buildings?
We don't, again, we don't have a budget.
The new lease agreement states that the Department of Public Works is responsible for tree maintenance, removal, as well as leaves and road maintenance. How has this reduced your budget?
It, I don't, it, I couldn't tell you for the hours put in how that's reduced our maintenance fees to our maintenance people, I could not tell you that.
Well, in, in the past, in the past budgets that were supplied to the town council, including la- letters that were submitted to the mayor, it said that a large part of their maintenance cost associated was, was the maintenance of trees, the leaves and so forth, and clearly the Town Department of Public Works has taken that burden. So clearly that, that Mr. Shortell, I believe, would probably concur. That should also reduce your, your budget, but without seeing the budget, we have no idea.
Uh, Bill, just, oh, just so you know, it's a cemetery. So as leaves come off the trees, the maintenance department of the cemetery removes those leaves and piles them up in an area of the cemetery. And the town comes in and takes away the piles. We still have labor to remove those leaves because it's, it's needed to be done to keep the cemetery in a very respectful manner when there's funerals and when people come to see their loved ones. In that setting, that it's clean at all times. We, the Cemetery Association still moves all the leaves, picks up debris, picks up sticks, removes low hanging branches, uh, debris that comes down, garbage that's in the cemetery. Yes, public works comes in and they're piled in a nice area. And then they ta- come in with a truck and they take it away for us. But we still have, there's eight acres down there, Bill, with a lot of trees. That's a lot of time to keep the cemetery. And if you go down there now and look at it, you'll be very impressed on how nice that cemetery looks. And that's important to the town, it's important to everybody.
Okay, so we'll, 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 shifting gears to that topic. Part of the new, brand new building that was erected, it stated that all debris, maintenance and so forth, all, all that debris would be put behind the brand new building. So if I went down there today, what you're telling me is all the branches and everything else would be nicely contained behind the new building, like, like it was approved for?
They're put based on the size of them and the area they can put in. Some of them are very large, some of them need chainsaws to be cut up with and put into piles. There's only limited space in that area, Bill, and you know that.
The Town Corporation Council in a letter to the Cemetery Association stated that the association be committing town funds to headstones that are not of historic significance. Is that the case?
Say that again, Bill?
The Town Corporation Council, in my opinion, in a letter of the Cemetery Association, stated that the Cemetery Association shouldn't be committing town funds to headstones that are, are not historic significance. Is that the case?
What does that, interpret what that means to, to me, Bill? Interpret what you read that to be, mean.
What that, what that means is in the past, that the Cemetery Association re- received funds. And they probably approached five hundred thousand dollars over a course of a certain amount of time. And that money was used to re- in quotes, unquotes, restore headstones. So in my opinion, based upon the letter that was sent from Janice Small to the Cemetery Association via John Leturnal, I believe that, in my opinion, it alluded to the fact that the town, the Cemetery Association shouldn't be committing any type of funds to restore any headstone because in her opinion, and this is my opinion, that it's private property. So the point of the matter is, is that you were theoretically taking the taxpayers' money to restore headstones that really have no business being paid for by the taxpayers. That's like Mr. Beaumont, I think Mr. Beaumont was the president of the, in memoriam at some one point in time, maybe he still is. But that's the equivalent of, why are we giving Mr. Beaumont the same amount of money because it's, it, 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 it doesn't have any type of historic significance? Why aren't we giving all the cemeteries in, in the town? So my, my point is, are you still doing the same thing with your budget? In other words, you still restore headstones by, I must, your, your own budget? But why are we doing that when we're committing taxpayers' funds to do so?
If I may take that up.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that.
Okay. Many of the headstones that are being repaired, to begin with, prior to the last few years, we were going out, having a contractor do most of the headstone repairs. Over the course of the last probably four or five years, Mr. Devaney has gotten to be more than a more than just very good at doing some, you know, the necessary repairs on them. And the bulk of them that are being repaired, in fact, are historic in nature, at least in terms of age. The older ones are the ones that tend to get knocked over, tend to get broken. Mr. Devaney has actually saved the association, has saved the a lot of money by doing the work himself rather than having to contract it out. So we are doing, we are replacing, you know, I say replace, we are repairing any headstones that need to be done every single year.
So then the answer then, Mr. Beaumont, to the question is, is that the Cemetery Association, through their budget that we don't have, is expen- is expending no money to restore any of the headstones per se? Mr. Devaney is doing it all, all of them supplies?
As far, Bill, as far as I know, that is factual.
Well, that, well, that's great.
Let me just, let me just, let me give you an anecdotal story. I, one day, as I'm walking through the cemetery, I noticed a headstone on the ground, one of the old ones. Eight, early eighteen hundreds. And it was broken in three pieces. I was meeting Bob at the, to go over the grounds at the cemetery, told Bob about it, brought out the equipment, picked it up, brought it in. Within two, three weeks, it was back on its, well, it was back in the ground because it doesn't have a, it does, those old stones don't have faces. It was back in the ground. The cost, whatever the epoxies and, and so forth were. That's what he does for the cemetery. And it was a historic stone that you would normally have sent out, that would have cost us, could cost us thousands of dollars to do, Bill, by the time it gets back.
So, I, I don't want to interrupt, I'm sorry. So what concept is historic versus what Janice Small's opinion of historic was? Is there, has that been defined? Because again, we're, we're talking upwards of over five hundred thousand dollars.
So what timeframe is that? And that has, that has to go way back as far as, I, I haven't seen five hundred thousand dollar figures, and I am assuming that if there was five hundred thousand dollars before the town council in the last few years, that somebody would have, it would have piqued somebody's interest in five hundred thousand dollars.
Well, it's, it's kind of hard to even question because we don't have budgets. I have no idea where money goes. And, and without these things, how can anybody even ask questions intelligently? Then yes, it's in your own minutes, it's in your own minutes. Yes.
Bill, we've got to remember, we're looking at eighty-five thousand dollars a year. Five years doesn't even come up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's for everything. So those numbers, that five hundred thousand dollars, don't know what you're talking about.
It, well, it's, it's, it's in your minutes. And again, I don't want to belabor, and I appreciate Mr. Servoni indulging me here. In, in the past, the cemetery reduced their budget by fifty percent during tough times. It was well documented, Jerry Farrell Jr. used to be the president of the association, I think it was in two thousand and nine, I could be off. And it said that, that the town gives a lot of money back to the association and so forth, and they appreciate it. And because of that, they would like to give back fifty percent of their budget and they clearly can operate on it. Just based upon what Mr. Shortell said, the things that I brought up, in my opinion, you should easily be able to do that. Have, have, have you looked at that? But we can't even ask those questions or even entertain any reductions because we don't have the budget.
Bill, we don't, there's no way we can operate on forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars a year. We, we, we will have a tough time to operate on eighty-five thousand dollars for the year. What happened in two thousand and nine, you'd have to ask Attorney Farrell Jr. about that. I couldn't speak for that, that's eleven years ago, Bill. And it has nothing to do with this year's budget. I have no idea what it was.
But that, but that budget isn't here, so, so it is a possibility?
No, I, I never said that. I just said that we will have trouble maintaining the cemetery with eighty-five thousand dollars. You, you understand what goes into a cemetery. So you know what goes into it, you know the time that's committed to be there, you know that the maintenance that has to be done. You know the hours that are put in. Repairs that are done on a cemetery that has a historic in nature from the sixteen eighties onward. There's always work to be done down there.
I, Mr. Gross, I, I asked, and I appreciate you guys coming up to the plate because we never have the opportunity, at least for me, to ask any type of questions, even though Mr. Gobert, the former president, said anytime anybody has any questions, or be more willing to come to the town. Including town audits, showing the budgets and everything else, why, why this is happening in this way, putting town audit beyond me? So with, with, with the headstones, excuse me. In your own minutes, it stated that while digging graves, that, that, this is a section report, and I brought this up at the town council meeting, and I asked the mayor on several occasions to bring this up. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, if you can hear me.
But you're bringing up meetings, a question here. You're bringing up minutes, meetings from when, and how does that pertain to the budget for this year in two thousand and twenty?
Well, let me, let me get, if, if I can finish, if I can finish, if I may. So, so I asked the mayor to do a follow-up and apparently he decided not to. But the point of the matter is, is your own minutes, by the section, said that while digging graves, that he's unearthed forty-four unmarked burials. Where are those identified and is anywhere in your budget, any, any, at all, amount of money to put some type of markation so that we know whether I'm walking down there or anybody is walking down there and says, okay, this is, you know, an unmarked grave, or how was, how are those being identified today? And is that in your budget?
That's not a budget question, and I think it has a but, a bunch to do with your pending claim. So, Mr. Gross, you don't have to answer that.
That's fine, but unmarked graves are unmarked graves. I could, every cemetery has unmarked graves.
I just want to make one final statement. Decades and decades and decades and decades ago, the former president of the cemetery, Center Street Cemetery, at down at the town clerk's office.
What does that have to do with this year's budget?
Because it, it does. If, if I may please finish, Mr. Chairman Servoni, I'd appreciate it. It states that the cemetery is going to be full in several years. That was a long time ago. Clearly.
What does it have to do with this year's budget?
Because they, they don't need, they, they just shut the thing down because there's no more burials. Based upon the facts that are in the town clerk's office, that they shouldn't be burying, in my opinion, shouldn't be burying anybody. And that while they are doing burials, they're unearthing other people, number one. And number two, they wouldn't have to have any of these expenditures other than the fact that they cut the grass, which would clearly reduce their overhead. But the fact of the matter is, those are Mr., those are facts, Mr. Servoni, and I know you're all about the facts. Those are the facts. I'll submit them to the town council. Thank you.
Can I just say something? It's Bob Gross. I sit on, or used to sit on a board in New Haven called the Jewish Federation. And we have a Cemetery Association for the Jewish Federation of Greater New Haven. And on that, on that board, we maintain, or I was a former member of, I'm not anymore on their board, that they maintain, I think it's thirteen or fourteen cemeteries. As Mr. Comerford was alluding to, they, some of these cemeteries don't have burials anymore. You should see the budgets of those cemeteries. You still have to maintain them, you still have to protect it from vandalism. You still have the older cemeteries where stones get damaged. You just leave all the stones on the ground. They do fall after time. There is still a great expense, even if you didn't have, so I'm just, for Mr. Comerford's, uh, knowledge here, that even if you don't have a burial, which we have plenty of room, and we're an active cemetery, and we're a historic cemetery, those cemeteries, which are a hundred and fifty to even less than that old, they still require budgets and maintenance and dollars to be spent on them every year. More than just cutting grass.
Thank you. Mr. Tardullo, you have a follow-up? I'm going to ask you to be very focused and brief, please.
Yes. First of all, I want to say that I'm not, again, I, I'm not questioning any dollar amount that the cemetery is asking for or any services that are performed. The conversation that was just took place, I have no knowledge of it and that's not my concern. But I, I do go back to, I would be making this ca- this point if it were any one of these organizations. I think that the town has a responsibility to maintain and to require proper documentation before they give taxpayer money to anyone. And they should ensure that they follow up in some way through an auditing process to make sure that that money is spent in the manner it was intended. And so I would just leave the council with a recommendation, and that is that I would recommend to the council that you not approve any money to the cemetery. Or if you do, approve it contingent on getting the required documentation. And if there's some legal issue involved, Mr. Beaumont alluded to some kind of alludable reason on their end, that we get some reason on their end, that we get some kind of a legal statement from the town, which provides some rationale for what's going on here. Because I, personally, I'm very confused, and I suspect many of you are as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to just say, you know, when I first got on the council, I had asked the mayor, when we go into budget time, for any entity that isn't directly related to the town, that we get their budget, their latest bank statement, a statement from them as the utilization of the money, and the impact upon the group if they don't get that money. And unfortunately, in the 10 years that I've been on the council, we do not get all of that information. And, you know, I think that we should get that information. This doesn't just apply to the cemetery, it applies to any group that is not run by, not overseen by the management of the town. And, you know, I continually raise that objection, but I still understand why it doesn't happen. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, it appears that we are done with the cemetery. Thank you, Mr. Gross, thank you, Mr. Beaumont.
Thank you.
We are on to public celebrations. And Ms. Gallagher, we know you are not more artist, although maybe I think that Ms. Gallagher is really your Batwoman name, and more artist is your Bruce Wayne name. But what can you tell us?
Well, I can tell you that we've prepared our budget based on the costs from last year, and the estimated costs for replacement of things that we're anticipating, such as props, decorations, costumes, for the forthcoming seasons of celebrations. And also, we have found that some of our vendors have increased their costs, our suppliers as well. I'm happy to say that attendance at our events has increased nicely over the past few years. And it's our wish that with this pending, this continuing pandemic, that we'll be able to celebrate and observe the ceremonies and events for the remainder of the year. And that would include the 9/11 ceremony, Veterans Day, Halloween, and seasons of celebrations. I'm sure all of you are, hopefully, all of you have seen on the town website that the Memorial Day Parade unfortunately had to be canceled. However, the Veteran Memorial Day Committee is planning a very nice alternate observance of Memorial Day that will be pre-recorded and broadcast. Scott Hanley is working closely with the committee on that, and it will be broadcast on Memorial Day. So despite the fact that we won't have the parade, and most of the expenses, we will have some that are associated with it. They'll also be placing flags on the graves as they always have in the past. And if we're fortunate enough to have some of our celebratory events in the fall, we will, of course, will be very observant of the guidelines that are established by the state of Connecticut for everyone's welfare, health, and safety. I thank you for the support you've given us in the past, and I look forward to having great times again in our town. Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Any questions for the public celebrations budget? I don't see questions from the council, and I don't see questions from the public. Any questions from those on the telephone? I just muted that one again. All right. Well, nice job. You managed to answer all the questions in one shot.
Well, what can I say? Thank you, everybody. We really, really appreciate your support. Stay well. Happy birthday, Chris.
All right. On to Columbus House. Do we have anyone?
Yes, good evening. I'm Eva Kudish, Chief Program Officer from Columbus House.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have any introductory remarks?
Yes, just give you, I would like to share with you some of the demographic from July 2019 until today, April, I'm sorry, until April 30th of 2020. We have served 15 families at the four units that we have in Wallingford Emergency Shelter. And we have also had, we have served 22 individuals during the season. As, I don't know how much you know, but we're still in the season. We haven't, the target date was April 6th to close the emergency shelter. But with decompressing the shelters, we moved everybody to the Red Roof Inn in Maryland. So we're still serving some of the Wallingford homeless in Maryland. The government gave us the order around March 16th that we needed to move everybody from congregating leavings to the hotels. And so we're, we still have clients over there. We have 17 families that discharged, and we have placed them in permanent supportive housings, a rapid rehousing, and we have also been able to reunite some of them with families and friends. Some of them also were able to find a job, and they become independent, and they rent their own apartment without any kind of subsidy. As you know, what the town of Wallingford contribute to Columbus House is $25,000 a year for a budget of $276,000. Currently, we have three families in the unit. We have one unit that is getting ready to be filled with a family that is waiting. We are just working on some maintenance issues. But, you know, with all the crisis and everything, Columbus House has not stopped services. We are continuing providing service.
Questions for Columbus House about the budget? I see no comments from the council, I see no requests from the public. Going to take my chance on the phone. And, all right. Well, Ms. Kudish, thank you for your time, thank you for your presentation, thank you for your work, and have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, on to the Spanish community of Wallingford. Mr. Knight, I see you. Anybody else going to present with you?
Adriana is coming on, and Jeff McNecky.
Hi, Vinnie.
Hi, Jeff.
I think she's phoning in.
Adriana, is that you?
Yes.
You are caller nine.
Okay, perfect.
Well, what do you have to tell us?
Perfect. So like Steve mentioned, Adrian, Adrian Audrey is from SCOW, and I have my board chair, Jeffrey Necku, and board treasurer, Steve Knight, here, virtually. So SCOW has been very busy. As of March 23rd, the staff had to start providing services remotely. We have continued to provide assistance over the phone, through video conferencing, and per appointment for clients who do not own technology equipments or smartphones, who struggle with step-by-step directions, and who are not as tech savvy, and those were very anxious and overwhelmed. Our after-school youth programs, music classes, English classes, Spanish classes, and other programs are all continuing virtually. Well, this is a very new way for providing social services, and we're trying our best. The community needs us more than ever. We anticipate that things are going to get very difficult, and the need for our services is going to increase even more than they currently have. So for our budget, we compiled our budget, and it was approved before COVID-19. If we are successful with our fundraising, the social services line, our budget is going to be many times the amount that is shown. We are already having to make cuts from grants that are getting a reduction or that are expiring. So the future is very uncertain for SCOW. We do receive state funding, and we plan to continue applying for grants. Our annual fundraiser that takes place in the fall at the moment is up in the air. So we're just kind of seeing what's going to happen while this pandemic is kind of panning out. Is there any questions for me, or for?
Any questions for SCOW? I see no requests in the chat bar. Anybody on the phone have questions for SCOW? All right, and like your immediate predecessor, you answered everybody's questions before they asked them.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate all your support.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Mind if I just piped in just for a minute?
I'll let you pipe.
Okay. The COVID-19 pandemic has turned the whole world upside down. But I can, I can promise you that there is no community in Wallingford that has felt the impact of the government edicts to shut down more than the Hispanic community. For SCOW, as Adriana spoke, some of our funding, we're not sure it's going to be coming to us at the same level, if at all. There is going to be an incredible stampede for grant, grants from every foundation that has been in our corner until now. And there is more need than ever. We are lucky that we just last week received $10,000 from the Meriden-Wallingford Community Foundation Coronavirus Response Fund, and that money will be going to help some of the members of the community that have, that are experiencing, obviously, they're unemployed, and their bills keep piling up. I just wanted to make the council aware of where we stood, as Adriana did, and that this, this organization is, is working hard to stem the destruction that's being visited on the Latino community. Thank you.
At the bottom of the agenda is the Wallingford 2020, and it has come to my attention that there is no money in next year's budget for the Wallingford 2020. But Christine Mansfield is here, and ready to take your questions about no money. We don't hear you, and I think you need to, you need to tell your computer that GoToMeeting wants to use your microphone. Upper right corner, there's the, the settings. Make sure that the application knows which microphone to use. I know Counselor Fishbein has questions. I'm wondering if maybe Mr. Bose can help him out while, Ms. Mansfield, you, see if you can get your audio to work.
I'll try that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim, why is there no money in this budget?
There was no request from the group, or the parade committee, or the folks that Mrs. Mansfield is, I'll just call them the group at large, if you will, for any taxpayer funds in the upcoming budget year, at least, not at budget time.
So was a budget submitted indicating that they have raised enough funds to hold the events that they had previously represented were going to be held and are now self-sufficient financially?
No, I can't state that. Counselor Fishbein, I don't know if they are completed with their funding abilities or anything like that. Nothing was submitted for funding, a funding request for 2021. That's basically all I know sitting here tonight.
All right, so.
Hi, Craig, this is Christine. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you. Your video is not working, but that's, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, so no, there's no incremental funding request. We have accrued funds from, of course, from the previous fiscal year. Due to the COVID situation, we have deferred scheduling of all events until September. That is a tentative plan. We will revisit those tentative schedulings in the next three weeks. We're meeting with our co-chairs, local and state officials, to determine the safety and the security of hosting any public events this year. No official word or scheduling change has happened for 2020. Right now, it's tentative for September through the first week. But to answer your funding question, we do expect, with continued sponsorships coming in, and the commitments of all of our existing sponsors, to repay the $25,000 that was deferred to us in last year's budget. And we have no incremental funding request needs for this fiscal year. So that is correct.
So the money that you were given last year, whatever hasn't been expended, goes away on June 30th. You understand that in the whole financial picture?
I do, I do. I do understand the budgetary exercise. However, we were also working with Jim Bose to accrue the funding in.
Christine, if I can help you out, it's in a special revenue line. Those funds don't lapse, right, Mr. Bose?
Yes, this portion of the. Yes, this portion that, of the page, page 44 of your budget binder that you're looking at, this line item would be the taxpayer-funded portion or the taxpayer contributions. Each funds are moved, they're charged, this line item, and they're moved to a special revenue fund. That's the funded that we've come back, Christine has come to you folks as well as John Sullivan and maybe others, which they have received donations or sales of, of goods and things of that nature to have those funds appropriated into that special revenue fund as well. That way everything does not, because this has been going, I believe, a fiscal year fundraising event and planning event. Therefore, it was, you know, I determined that it wasn't a good thing to have in the general fund because the general fund, as Craig correctly said, is legally, legally lapses at the end of the year. But the special revenue fund will exist until the event is held, all bills are paid and hopefully we all live long enough to have the events and come up with a summary of what actually happened at that time. So that's what we are doing here.
But the special revenue line is comprised of monies that come into the entity from everywhere except for government, correct?
No, that includes, you're, well, you're half correct. It includes what they've raised plus what the, what the government has put in through the budgetary process.
Okay, so under what, we, we never passed an ordinance creating this. I believe we ratified the creation of a committee, but by what vehicle do we treat the appropriation of tax dollars that are not expended in that particular year as non-lapsing without an ordinance?
I don't believe I need an ordinance to do that. The council appropriated all funding.
Then, then you wouldn't need the, the appropriations in force line at all if you have autonomous power to just do that. The government must permit the non-lapsing of an account.
That's correct. We permitted these not lapse by creating a different bookkeeping entity, special revenue fund or the Wallingford 350 celebration.
But who created that?
The Controller's office. I did.
Without, so by what? It's not in the charter. Where do you get that power?
It's an accounting, administrative accounting function. I don't know, I don't have the CRA distribution funds, $13 million over the last 10, 12 years. But I, but I, I did the same thing with that because all projects were not gonna, both funds were not gonna lapse each year. And they're used obviously for the purposes, as the nine of you know, that they're used.
That's totally different. The CRA funds were not appropriated by the town into the account, it didn't come from taxpayer dollars. CRA paid the town a check. Natural correlation is, it's just like when somebody buys a T-shirt from the 2020 group. That's revenue to the group and, and that could be treated in a certain fashion. I got that. What we're talking about is the portion of an appropriation of tax dollars from last year being put into a non-lapsing account by the Controller's office without the authority of the council, right?
That's correct. But are you going to tell me now after three years that you folks don't know that this has been happening?
I didn't know it was happening.
This funding started three years ago and it's for ease of bookkeeping. So you have all transactions reported and recorded in the same bookkeeping entity. So we don't have to go, you know, fetching around for balances remaining and things of that nature.
Well, I, I understand running a government is difficult. I, but there are, there are constraints. All right, so where in this budget do I see the remainder of the tax appropriation from last year that is being carried over?
You don't.
Why not?
Because there's no request, even in the special revenue fund, the different bookkeeping entity. Because if there were, you would see that in the special funds budgets, which are on pages like seven and eight.
So if I didn't ask the question, how would I know this?
I, I don't know.
Oh, frustrating. So do you know how much is left over? Because obviously it's not in the book.
I don't, I don't have that figure with me now. We could, we can get everything out to the council. Very, I mean, we send you reports. The expenditure reports that come to you will show appropriated funds that have been approved by the council to spend that are not yet spent. You get those on a monthly basis. But if you wanted to see something that shows something a little bit more detailed, then we can certainly show you that.
I'm just trying to find out, I'm just trying to find out some way that there could be openness and transparency on things like this. Because all too often I run into things like this. I mean, the, the police chief came to us and he said that his portion of the 2020 expenditures were not in the budget, that we would see where we were at that time. He would come to the council and perhaps ask for an appropriation. That's one way of dealing with it. Because government decided not to create a budget for this event and to have separate lines. My, I guess as I wind down or, or get more wound up, the last time I looked at a, at the P and L for the 2020 situation, it showed no revenue for the parade. And I know that Counselor Saul, well, it was, he wasn't a counselor at that time. Mr. Sullivan, when he came to us and with Jonathan Chappelle, they had said that they were going to be selling sponsorships for the event as well as paying entities to participate, that they may have to do that. And I think, I think it was like $120,000 that was appropriated for that, those things. So where are we with that?
We, I don't understand your question. Where are we with that? I mean.
Okay, so we appropriated $120,000 over, I think, two years for a parade. Is there still $120,000 for a parade?
Minus what they've spent. I can't tell you right now what they've spent. Sitting here right now, I cannot tell you that.
Okay.
We can get that. We certainly, we do have it broken down by the two functions, the general celebration and the parade. And we can, I can certainly send that to you. I, we'd probably just have to update the month of April and we'd probably, we'd probably get it up here tomorrow, if not tomorrow, Monday.
Okay, is that part of the money that, was that separated as a non-lapsing or is this just a big?
No, it, it will show you, as far as on the revenue side, it will show you the source of the revenue. In the case that you're talking here, the general fund transfers, which is the amounts that have been budgeted over the years in the general fund through the process, plus all other sources of revenue. And of course, then on the, the other side of that, the expenses, what they, what they paid out, you know, by the two functions, let's just say the general celebration and the parade. And, and each of them will have sort of like a little balance of the funds that they have left. And that ties into the fund balance of that special revenue fund. We can show you all that.
Okay. And ultimately, I guess, I can't, I don't know if Christine is still on. I guess not. Jim, do you know, have you written any checks to any, you know, it was represented that, I think it was a military band. They were going to try to coax a military band to play in this parade. Have you written any checks to any groups to play in this parade?
Yes, I, I don't know if that, for that one instance, for a military parade or not, or military groups, I'm sorry. But I do know there were deposits paid for certain groups to reserve those dates, which were originally the June dates, for various, various features within the parade. That will also be on that record that we can send you.
All right. Because the last time I saw P and L, I think the only time we got a P and L, it showed no expenditures on that document from this particular entity. And who's the gatekeeper from the town as far as like, you know, we reserved dates or the group reserved dates in June, paid money and now June isn't happening. Do you know with a non-refundable? I mean, are we going to have to pay more money in September if we got to do this over again? Where are we?
There.
I think, oh, okay.
Jim, yeah, sorry. Yeah, sorry. I'm having some Wi-Fi issues in my house. There, there are.
No problem.
No, Craig, we've, we're looking at every contract right now. There's no risk to the town for incremental money or penalties. We're in a very, we're in an unprecedented situation with the pandemic. We're looking at force majeure clauses and we're ensuring that the town has no risk or penalty with the existing commitments we have. Our sponsors have been wonderful to stay committed on the revenue side. And we're looking very carefully at the expense side. We've frozen all, all expenses at this point. You won't see any monies coming out of any of the accounts, the accounts because of the current situation. And, you know, the subcommittees are evaluating right now whether it's safe to have anything in September. And, you know, it, it, you know, it's, it's a pessimistic situation right now. So we're reserving judgment. We'll have a formal notification and we'll probably end up presenting to the council in June after we have a chance to process the local and state recommendations right now. It's just too unstable of a situation to predict. What we're doing is we've met with our, our folks at the town hall. Jim, obviously the Controller's office controls all the money. And we will ensure and protect the town's interest in the taxpayers. And at the same time, we will secure efforts to have some type of celebration, whether it's this year or next year. We never dreamed that we'd have to even come talk to you again. We're not asking for any incremental revenue. In fact, we're raising more money. But at this point, we don't have any answers at this or expect to know any in the next three weeks. We will have an answer to you better in June. Hopefully all of us do as to what impact this is going to have. But we are forecasting right now no extra monies, which is why there's a $0 request. I came here out of the decency to answer any questions. I know how unknown this is. This is an unprecedented situation. We, we, we thank you for your patience as we work through what to do with this situation because we quite honestly don't know where we can, what we can do and what options we have financially as we go through the contracts. Some of our sponsors on our hosting sites have far bigger issues with what they're dealing with to survive this, never mind deal with a town celebration that they've been gracious enough to give us money for. So we're kind of trapped right now. So I do indulge your patience. We will come before you and you can ask and grill as, and, and you're owed those answers as well. I just don't have a lot. I, I do know that we've paused out of respect for the residents that have lost their lives and are fighting for their lives out of health concerns. We've stopped, quite honestly, publicly planning things. We've gone quiet there. Behind the scenes, we're, we've looked at every contract and we're looking at every penny right now and, and honestly looking to where we might have to, we might cut expenses and scale things back and out of deference for a situation that has just been unprecedented. So bear with us. Jim, Jim is being very patient with us. He's waiting for our committees and our sponsors to reconvene when it's safe. And honestly, some, there's been some, some serious health impacts for some of our committee members in dealing with this. And, and they've, they've had their own deaths in their families. So we've been very sensitive to that. And unfortunately, I can tell you, no, no additional monies have been expended either from the $25,000 that you gave, that you accrued to us in September. And on the parade side, it's been very quiet as well. So no risks right now are forecasted. We will stay in touch with you. We will update you quarterly as we always do. But right now we just, it's going to be a little frustrating for all of us. We're, we're, you know, we're very humbled by the severity of the situation and, you know, a bit sad, but we're, we're praying for the rest of our, our town people that will be recovered and all of our businesses are recovered. And we can come out stronger. But right now I'm gonna, I'm gonna indulge your, your patience with us. We have not reconvened any finance committee right now until we can get a ruling from Janice on, on some of the clauses. One of our contracts has to go out to bid. Due to the police and the fire EMS, they're fighting a battle on the front line of COVID. We have not reconvened on that situation for fireworks or parade, but we will be in the next week or two of such. We've, we've been on phone contact. We just haven't formally convened or made any decisions on meetings. So more to come. You know, I wanted to come here tonight just to make sure that we could stay in touch with you and answer any questions, even though we don't have really any, we don't have a formal new request, but we do have monies that are tied up. We, we, we're not in a position to spend it because quite honestly, the bid is going to lapse before we can get a chance to hold an event. And then we're not going to probably be able to hold the event because of, because of health and safety and social distancing. We're really, really in, in a, in a crisis situation right now. So I wish I had more answers for you, but right now we don't. And so we have to make sure that we stay transparent to your, to the process. And, and how Jim is, is accruing the funds, I'm going to defer to his financial expertise. I, I don't know.
Okay. And I'm just trying to make sure that there's money to have an event. Okay? So my understanding, the fireworks situation, usually those are non-refundable. But you're telling me that Janice is looking at the contract to see if, whether or not we can get out of it. Is that fair?
Craig, we have not, we have a contract. We have a, we, we have not expended any funds. We have not received, we have not asked Masonic here to give us the funds yet for the fireworks. They are paying for the product. That we were using the third year of the bid contract that the public celebrations and the park and recreation contract has. It was the third year. It, it expires this year. It's going to be up for bid. Legion was of course the low, the low bid provider last year. They have to go back, back out to bid. Quite honestly, we don't know what that situation is because it's got to go back out to bid. And quite, I, we, we just don't know. I can't predict what September looks like. You, you're watching the news as we are. I, I, I honestly don't know if we have to worry about, you know, fall events right now. We're, we're, we're very frightened by what these situations are holding for any public events. So, so honestly, we, we're in, we're in Plan C now of if we're not going to host in, in the timeframe we thought of Plan B and the, and the vendor is going to change in Plan B. We have to wait for that process to play out and see who the new vendor is. We've got to reopen all of those negotiations. Thankfully, our sponsors have been wonderful. Masonic, Harry, Ulrich Cho have been absolutely wonderful to continue being our partners through all this when they're dealing with this crisis. And we have to go to Plan D. So I have to tell you, we will be back to you in June with a more formal understanding, but our partners are still trying to figure this out. So I don't know if we're going to have any better answers, but we can better answer this outside of the scope of this budget session tonight for sure, because there are a number of items outside of the budget.
I'm just trying to get an update, you know, because I did get a P and L. That was the last thing that I got. I had questions with regard to that. There's not really been an opportunity. So my last question was, have you had any? See, I don't even know who has been paid to be in the parade that was supposed to be in June. But assuming that you have paid somebody to be in the parade, has anybody of those, whoever they are, indicated to you that they are not going to be able to participate in September if that's the new date?
There, we don't have any answers yet because we were still looking to lock in September as safe enough to host it. So at this point, we expect there to be changes, both good and bad, that there are, there may be participants that cannot participate. And because of the time change, that there could be new opportunities for. And because of the time change, that there could be new opportunities for participants to be in it. At this point, it's premature, Craig, to give you an answer. We'll have a better understanding over the next few weeks. Hopefully, this curve continues to flatten and we'll have better, we'll have a better idea. The crystal ball is too muddy right now, Craig. We don't know. And I'd be guessing. So let's bring the, let's bring the committee back to you all in June and have a more formal update and give you a better idea. You know, it's, and if you have to make a, you're making a budget decision on zero. Right now, what we're really talking about are funds that are outside the scope of this discussion. But we'd like to be available to you and talk through it. So I'll defer to the mayor and see where, what the timing is for this, for a redo on this. But we just don't have any answers right now on what we can commit to. We can, we can give you what we think might happen, but I'm going to tell you it's Plan C.
I don't, I don't want you to guess. All I asked was, has anybody communicated to you, that wouldn't be a guess, that they cannot do September?
Those are in act negotiations, Craig. We don't have affirmative answers on everybody yet. They're actively, we have hints that there may be conflicts. Yes, of course, on every committee front. So yes, there are hints. Yes, there are risks that there will be participants in every event that may not be able to play the part we wanted them to. But there may also be others that could not have participated in June that will be available in that timeframe.
And that's the guess aspect of this.
Yes, yes.
So, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Chertel, you're up.
Oh, thank you.
Your cake is waiting, I'll remind you.
Yeah, I tried. Nobody knows that better than I do. I, I don't know. Christine, you kind of already answered this. My question was less about the budget, that doesn't, that's zero right now, but more about, you know, what? I guess you'll come back to us in June. I'm just curious from a purely, as a resident, like, what's the the date where you guys look at it, July 1, you say, you know what, it's not going to happen in September. We're going to have to do it June of 2021 or, you know, I don't know. Maybe, I don't know. Maybe there isn't.
Yeah, no, the stake in the ground, we will be reconvening a steering and director's meeting the week of May 25. And we would expect to publish a public recommendation by the first week of June, which is why we'd like to be back to you in the middle of June. Not that we think that we're going to get major clarity on the state and national funds, but we do owe our committees and our sponsors and our first responders a chance to restrategize. But really, out of deference to our sponsors and our first responders, they're fighting the front line of the pandemic. It was, you know, we're balancing sensitivities to being, this is a party. This is a celebration of us, which is great. But they're literally trying to keep us safe. So we are really cautiously entertaining conversations with key members and socializing ideas. And then we feel it's safe enough and we're not being selfish enough to bring everybody back for the last week of May to make a decision. Based on our last public comment in April, that's the stage we set, is that we would be back to you in late, late May, early June. So we're just really letting folks be with their families and intend to their businesses until we get out of the woods a little bit.
Right, right, understood. I think, because I'm just, yeah, I mean, I don't know. I would be shocked if we had it in the fall, only because you read about college, it is about going back in person, you know. The NFL is talking about playing in empty stadiums. So I don't, you know, I don't know. But I guess we'll find out. So.
Chris, yeah, Chris, safety and health come first. We know we all love Wallingford, but we will not risk one, one citizen for a celebration ever. So please just understand that. We have, you know, a lot of volunteers. We have a lot of businesses. We have a lot of people. A lot of residents are begging us to have it. We will not risk one, one hair. And so trust me when I say there are, there's a Plan D. And unfortunately, you know, we're, we'll be formalizing that public recommendation very shortly.
Yep. Hey, nothing wrong with a 351. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I see no more questions from the council. I see no questions from the public in the chat bar. We have one caller left and they're permanently muted anyway. There being no further business on the agenda, I declare this meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, all.
Good night, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Happy birthday, Chris.
Happy birthday, Chris.
Happy birthday, Chris.
Thank you. You'll be okay. Good night.
Don't have too much fun.